Okay, do we want to give for a couple of minutes? Is anybody mine?
I don't mind.
We do appreciate, I appreciate all the work that you did. I appreciate every citizen that agrees to work on any of our commissions or committees within the city. We don't take your work lightly. I know that you worked out of your heart concerning this. I know that some of you worked out of, with friends and family in mind, knowing some of the struggles that some of us in the city are having with housing. I want to say though, that what council did, we were not rejecting. Please don't think that we were rejecting your report or disdain, putting disdain on the work that you put into it. The sentiment was that there were some things that needed to be changed, that we needed to discuss more. We needed a greater understanding. And what I would like to do is, I would like to ask Clerk Halanga to please begin to set a date for a joint meeting between the Planning Commission, the Housing Committee, and Council, so that we can discuss the report and look into the things that seem to be disturbing and see if we can find the right solution to it all. I don't want anybody to feel that, again, feel that we do not appreciate the work that you put in. We do appreciate your work. We appreciate the fact that you love Ypsilanti as much as some of us on council love Ypsilanti and that we want to see Ypsilanti and that you want to see Ypsilanti flourish just like we do. So if you would find a date and a time, excuse me, that those three, the three groups that I mentioned could come together so that we can, we can solve this issue. I don't want anyone to feel hurt, feel like they're overlooked, feel that, you know, their work doesn't count. I want us all to know that we're valued and all that the work that was done is valued. So please, if you would find a date for us. And I do want to say, I do want to apologize to those that were, were hurt by comments that were misunderstood or taken in the wrong way. So I do apologize, but let's work together and solve what's, what's good about the report, except what's good about the report, and solve what seems to be issues or problems with the report so that we can move on as a city. We have something good before us and possibly, and I want to see us to just move forward. So thank you for coming, thank you for speaking, and please don't stop coming and don't stop speaking. And appreciate you, thank you. And remember, love is truly the answer. So let's love one another in the midst of our disagreements. Thank you. You can go on with the agenda.
All right, Council, the next item is the discussion of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 goals. And let Facilitator Dr. Jeffrey Bernstein take the floor.
Sorry about that. I remembered I had to unmute myself, but I couldn't get the cursor to go into the right place. So can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, thank you. So thank you again for, I thought, what we had a productive session last week. And I did share with you all through Clerk Halanga last Wednesday, the goals that came up and that we had sort of talked about in the last meeting. My plan for tonight, if this works for you, is to go sort of goal by goal as we did last week. Take a look at the document that we put together. Take a look at the goals that you had. Correct wording if need be. Perhaps there are some goals that you no longer feel are goals. Perhaps there are some things that might want to be grouped together to basically create as good a list as we can. And then to go through item by item and take care of voting and vote on priorities for the council. And I will report to the council in my final report, the votes that were cast by council and by staff separately for each of these items, so that you can get a sense going forward what the collective goals were. So will that work for people? Is this, does this feel like a reasonable use of our time together tonight?
Sure.
Okay, awesome.
I may.
Okay, awesome. So it sounds great. So I guess, Andrew, am I able to share my screen here to put up these goals?
Yes, you'd be able to share.
Okay, great. So let me do that. So I think probably the best way to do this, as I said, is to go item by item. And so what I have put up here, I'm assuming you can see it here shared, is the goals that came up under the heading of Community Connection. And as I said, you should all have copies of these documents that were sent out last week. So let's take a look at this list. Let me invite you to take a look at it, see what you think about it. And we can talk about, are there any goals you'd like to eliminate, rephrase, combine? I thought we did good work last week, but with a week's time to look at the full list and think about it, perhaps we're in a different place than we were originally. So let me open this up for any discussion you might have. This reminds me of a classroom at 9:30 this morning.
I think it looks how I expected after our last session.
Okay. And I just want to point out that if it does, I would like to give a lot of credit to Mia, who worked with me on this and really did a great job pulling this together. So thank you to Mia, they seems to be working so far. If this is what we're thinking about and this seems reasonable to people, the question I'll throw out to you, would you like, I think it probably makes sense to vote item by item. So take a look at a page and then vote on the items on that page. Will that, is that what people would like to do? Or we can hold voting off to the end?
I have one, one change, sorry. I think number five was supposed to be changed to actually purchasing equipment to provide entertainment, not just at Frog Island, actually. It was, that, that was one that was missed. Sorry for not catching it.
Okay, that's, I appreciate the correction, thank you. Other thoughts here?
When we're looking at this list, are we looking to rank them?
Well, what we will do, once we're okay with what the items are, we'll go through a process and each of you will be able to vote. Perhaps on this list, since there are 13 items, maybe seven times. So you'll each get to vote for seven different things. So now we're just sort of working on making sure that the choices are phrased in the right way. And then in just a couple of minutes when we're done with that, we can move to voting on it.
Director Bernstein?
Yes.
I have a question. Number eight, where we want to hire a director. My question would be, are we looking to hire a full-time director or a part-time director?
So I put that on there. So I'm looking at a full-time director. And that's what I would put in the budget.
Oh, I thought I put that on there.
Bullshit.
Good. Yay, Francis.
I thought it was full-time, that's what I've been going for.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, definitely full-time.
Okay, I think we can definitely change that in the, in the set of goals. Thank you. Anything else on this list we'd like to play around with?
Um, I would just, just for the wording sake, for, number 10, where it says, consider new motto campaign and make the motto more relevant. I would just make a specific Ypsilanti motto campaign revitalization, something to revitalize, make it more relevant. I just wanted to jazz up the name a little more. Revitalization campaign, perhaps.
So revitalization campaign for new city motto or something like that?
Yeah, just for city motto, it's the same motto, but just a revitalization campaign.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Anything else we're thinking or?
Oops, I'm sorry, I was muted. Councilmember Morgan, I was asking, what do you have in mind when you say revitalize or changing the wording? Not that I'm disagreeing, I just want to understand more of what you're, what you're.
You're asking, you're asking, what do I mean?
Yes.
Oh, um, no, it's still, I think the, the historic motto of pride, heritage, diversity should stay the same. It's just like the Coca-Cola is like making it more present day relevant to a lot of different citizens from its motto hundreds of years ago. Just trying to, whether we advertise, market, promote in our, like what a new, what a current pride looks like, what current heritage and current diversity looks like, that's all.
Okay, because I, I've always, I've often felt that the heritage bothered me, because when you really look at the history of the city, there are some things that are there in the heritage that I think that we really, that we really don't want to celebrate. But I understand, thank you.
Welcome, Mayor.
Anything else here on goals under Community Connection?
I have a question for clarification. Number 13, engage the public in issues concerning the removal of Peninsula Dam. What, does that mean like public input? Like what are we, what are we asking for? Because I thought we have gone through a process similar to this already.
I can address that. So as part of the, the process for going through the studies for removal, there's a grant that was awarded from the DNR. Part of that submission was, a part of that, that grant proposal was a public engagement plan that has been there. And we waited for funding to come through. And that, we're currently dealing with the, anyway, there's a, there's a full public engagement plan that Chris Jacobs and I are continually meeting about, and we need to ramp that up. And so there's been, we've submitted a grant to the National League of Cities for $10,000 to facilitate that. And they will provide expertise and resources for that, should we get that, and I need to check up on that. But if not, then this is something, so there's a series of public meetings that have already been planned and to go forward with that. And I will present that in the next week or so to council as well.
I have a question, you have a question. So if it's a part of the grant, that means it's something we have to do?
It is, it is something we have to do, so.
So why would we list it here? Because if we don't do it, we don't get the grant funding. There's a lot of grants that we apply for that have other things attached to them.
Because, because we may not get the grant and it needs to be accounted for in the budget and it's something that needs to happen. So it's there as a, it's here as a goal. It needs to happen and it's a, you know, we can check that off, but you know, it's a placeholder. We did, we did this last week when we were talking about it. There are things on here that definitely need to happen.
Specifically talking about this one, trying to, I'm just trying to understand.
Right. No, and it's just to get it out there to have these kinds of discussions and know that this is coming up and that's, that's going to happen. So. Did I answer the question?
Yes, sort of, for me.
Okay.
It's just in case we don't get the grant. If, if, and I guess that's.
Right.
If we don't get the grant, we need to engage the public in, I guess, step-by-step processes and things of that nature. But you've already just, you've already gone over this stuff. So we'll see it when it comes. But that helps to know why it's there.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown, Councilmember Wilcoxen, is the language that we have here on number 13, does it convey what you'd like it to convey? Yeah.
I was going to say, I can't speak to that, but, Councilmember Wilcoxen, if that works for you. I just was, when it said engage the public in issues concerning, kind of that threw me off, the language there. But I mean, if it, if what you give us in a week or so makes sense, then it'll.
I guess I could, I could reword this to say implement the public engagement plan for removal of Peninsula Dam.
And can I ask one more question? I thought I was done. This is, this is, this does not have anything to do with discussing if it's going to be removed or not.
No, we've already done that.
Right. And so I just wanted to make sure that we knew which direction this was going in.
Right, and so this, this is designed to, there's, I'll give you a brief so you know what it looks like. So over the course of the next few months, there will be three interactive meetings to engage the public in three different focus groups in those first three meetings. Then that data will be, that information will be compiled. There will be a town hall. Then feedback from that will, will feed into the, the information for the engineers and the technical aspect of the, of the, of the project. And so in engaging those folks, the, the technical people to do the project, they have been required to, to be present for a certain number of meetings with the public. And then there's meetings that follow after that, but that, there's the initial.
Okay.
Initial part of the plan.
Well, I trust that you guys are working it out. And I'd like, I'd like to see it if you guys don't mind. Sometimes people want some expertise, like at the beginning, you know? We don't have all that for them. Go ahead.
No, that's, that's fine. And so, you know, Chris Jacobs is, has, we've gotten proposals from a couple of people to facilitate and that needs to be decided and that conversation is happening, so.
My, my screen froze, what did you say?
Sorry. So Chris Jacobs and, and I have been meeting with the Huron River Watershed Council and, and we've discussed this part. So the Watershed Council is doing the technical aspect. And Chris and I and Scott have, have been discussing this with Commissioner Gibbons. And this is then going to the bigger groups. So a year and a half ago, there was a small committee that, that kind of devised a plan and, and get it, get it together. And so we're looking to reengage that committee and, and move forward with the plan.
Okay, thank you for engaging.
Sure.
Me in this, because I never knew, I didn't know what that entailed. To make sure it's something that we could accomplish. I hadn't talked with Christopher at all, so I appreciate that.
So what I have here, the new language is implement public engagement plan for removal of Peninsula Dam, which I think probably speaks more to what this conversation has gone around.
Right.
So I think I, and, and it also clarifies that there, there is no confusion, the dam is being removed.
Well, we're moving forward, right. So that was the resolution, yes.
Okay, that works for me. Is there anything else that people would like to edit in terms of this list? Yes, I hear a yes.
Number 12, I would just like to ask Mr. Barr, I know that the charter allows for a charter commission every, I think, I don't know how many, what, how many years interval it is. But if you could speak to that, is it time? I know not long ago, a few years ago, we did have a charter commission to revise the charter. So is it that time again?
Mayor, in 2014, there was a charter amendment that removed the eight-year requirement.
So you can do it anytime?
This is just something that was in Councilmember Wilcoxen's goals.
Okay, so it's every eight years or that?
No, that was removed by charter amendment in 2014.
So now it can be at any, at any time?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
So I put this on here just because of the confusion with the, the elections due to the resigning of the, the previous mayor and wanted this to be up there. I mean, that, you know, if we, if we engage the charter commission now or in the future, then this all goes towards the next election cycle.
Okay, then this is another question for you, Mr. Barr. Do, will we have to select a new charter commission? Or will we use the one, the last one? How long does that commission stand for?
Mayor, what happens is that a call for the charter commission can be made either by the electorate or by the city council. And if city council makes the call, then it goes on the ballot and charter commissioners can run for the office. And then the, the public has to determine if there is a charter commission and if the commissioners are elected. Then they're elected for the term of the office, which is until they come to grips with whether they wish to amend or revise the city charter. It comes to city council to set a budget for the commission. If there is a commission, then they sometimes hire a consultant and then they meet and come to a conclusion. They propose amendments or revision of the city charter. It has to go to the governor and the attorney general. And then once all that's done, then it goes to another vote of the people as to whether or not they accept the charter commission recommendations. At the last commission that the clerk was mentioning, there were a number of charter recommendations and the voters approved all of them except one.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess, I guess I could amend or revise the language on that, you know, from establishing the commission to reviewing the, reviewing the charter for that discussion. I mean, so if we've got two years to the next election, you know, moving that through the initial stages that Mr. Barr was just talking about. And in, in whether the whole charter needs to be revised or that specific language regarding, you know, terms of office and things like that need to be short of. So.
I wasn't asking that to take it off. I just wanted to make sure that I did know that it, I didn't really know that the, the eight-year period had been removed. Because I did know that it was every so often that it actually had to happen, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure how to revise this to, to leave it open so that there's, it doesn't necessarily have to be a full commission, but, but parts of the charter need to be addressed.
I drafted, I drafted some language. What I wrote here, and tell me if I'm getting this right, is review city charter to consider if it should be amended?
Sounds good to me.
That works.
Okay. So we'll make that the change. Review city charter to consider if it should be amended. Okay. Anything else on this section? All right. Can I suggest we move to voting on these items? So Clerk Halanga is going to take care of setting up the polling here for people to vote, and that will then generate the information for me. So, and what we are going to do here, and I believe it's already up, is we're going to have to, because the software will only let us vote on 10 items at once, and we have 13 here.
I got kicked out earlier, did you hear me?
I did not, sorry.
Oh, I got kicked out. I was saying on, um, okay, did you say you were going to leave 12 as is?
No.
What did you say?
The language I had proposed was review city charter to consider if it should be amended.
Okay, so what I was saying is that can we just put, um, because we, because city council does, don't need to decide if it needs to be amended. Because Councilmember Wilcoxen, he's already said he wants to amend it. So I think that that's already there. I think we just need to say charter revision, revised charter. And then what that does is it just gets the ball rolling.
Yeah.
Because he already agrees it needs to be amended. So I think we should just say revise chart, city charter.
That works, that works.
Okay, revise city charter, got it?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so the, um, Councilmember, Clerk Halanga, would you, can I turn to you to explain how this voting works? Because there's no need for me to try to explain something that I don't fully understand. Can I turn to you to give instructions?
This should have popped up for the department heads and the city council members. And since the software only allows each question to contain 10 items, I split it up into two sections here, but it's still numbered 1 through 13. And then Dr. Bernstein, how many would you like council and the department heads to vote on?
Let's have people vote on seven total. So between 1 to 13, people can vote on seven.
So it's just your tops, your, your seven goals that you want to make priority?
Seven out of 13 that are your top, that are your priorities here, okay? So I will be quiet and allow people to vote.
My screen is only showing seven.
You have to scroll down.
You'll hit a next, there's a little icon says next.
As this is going on, can I ask, are you all able to hear me and see me okay? Because right now for me, everyone who's not speaking is frozen. And I'm just wondering if that's a problem on my end or if this is a problem that's in sort of the meeting here.
Oh, I can see you and you're moving.
Yeah, I can see you moving.
I can see you as well.
Can you all see each other moving?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having some like internet instability issues. So occasionally I'm shutting my video off or it goes off. But otherwise, I mean, I'm fine, so.
Okay, okay.
Andrew, somehow or other, I lost the poll. Could you, could I have it back, please?
Yeah, I'm not able to do that. So if, if you hit end polling, then your, your votes have already been your cast. So I can't.
I didn't, I just, I, I was trying to go back to the previous page to look at it and.
It might be, it might be a tab that's hidden, like underneath the page you're just looking at, like it's underneath it.
Oh, I got it, thank you. Where was the little tab up at the top, poll in progress? Okay.
Feels like a C-SPAN moment when you're waiting for the votes to be counted.
I wish we could use the polls for voting all the time.
Make sure nobody is voting by mail. Just fraud or anything.
Annie stole my priorities for connection.
What?
I said, you stole my priorities for connection here. I went the back. That's a bad joke. I'm sorry.
I'm so confused, but.
Later.
Oh, never mind. I get it. I get it now.
I said, at least it's a joke, it's not so serious.
Yeah, I was trying to open my new water bottle and was too focused.
I need eight, not seven.
Ah, such is the job of prioritization.
So does this software allow for ranking so that if, if, I mean, this is just, you, you've got, this is the seven that I think are important. But then are we going to go through a second round as a group to rank those? Or how does that happen?
I had, I was not planning on that. What I was planning to do is just sort of give you, here are the items that got the most, I mean, I'll give you all the votes, but within that you can determine which ones got the more, got more votes. And then, you know, within council, sort of figure out which of those items might be highest priority for people. I had not been planning to do that, though. Andrew, I'm not sure how to keep track of how people are voting. So will you sort of?
Has, has council and department heads all completed voting? It looks like they have. So I'm gonna end polling now. And then I can share the results if you'd like to look at them. You can scroll through and see how people voted. And then this is all created into a report through the, the Zoom reporting, which I will forward to Dr. Bernstein tomorrow.
Oh, looks like we're gonna get a communications director.
Are you all, okay. Website seems to be doing pretty well.
Yep. Two years in a row.
Is it, is everyone ready to move on to the next section?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so let us move along to the next section here. And this is where we're talking about community and safety. So as you see here, there are 11 items that we have put up there. And again, hoping that this reasonably reflects where we were last week. Let me open it up to you for wordsmithing, combining, eliminating, clarifying. I think we had a good discussion about the first group of items. So let me open it to you if there are things you'd like to talk about within this list.
Yes. A, a vote for me, I'm just telling you this upfront. A, a vote to hire a social worker within NYPD. When I, when I checked that one, I'm also thinking that the social worker is going to be responsible for creating the mental health response team. And then I'm also going to use some of the mental health milage money to help with that. And I'm just wondering, do I have to do all three of them? Because as a city manager, that would be one of my plans. And so my number one would be to hire this person. And then I would probably use some, be asking council for some, to use some mental health money. Because we, we had only budgeted for a part-time one last time. And I know this is gonna need a full-time one. So if we budget like we did last year, we'd be asking for half from that or either all. And a part of their job description would be to create the mental health response team. So. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yep, I think.
If I pick that one and I don't pick those other two, that doesn't mean that's not, those other two are not gonna happen. Because I think they directly come under hiring a social worker. Those are things that all relate to that. So I don't want to use all of those to, to take up my seven votes. Is what I'm saying. Somebody else might feel the same way. You know, that that's all kind of a package. Creation of mental health and under, and you know, maybe we should have said that. And under creation of a mental health response team would mean hiring the social worker and using the mental health money to create it. You know what I'm saying?
I, I'd love, I'd love to hear people speak to that issue. But if some of these things seem so tightly nested, one within another, that you're not gonna have one without the other, then that would suggest to me that maybe we do want to combine some of these items. But I'd like to hear other people weigh in on this and offer their perspectives.
Well, my belief was that this was a phased-in approach. So the priority would be to hire the social worker. And then knowing that the other pieces follow behind that, so they don't necessarily have to happen simultaneously. But it means that that is the jumping off point to doing those subsequent things. So I, I kind of agree with what Francis is saying as far as my, if my vote for hiring the social worker also means that I want to see those other pieces happen. I just don't believe that they have to happen simultaneously because we have to lay the foundation first of how that's going to work. Before we, you know, start adding those other pieces.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree with that. That the milage money is a, is a separate vote.
Also, I just would like to, to comment with regards to the use of the mental health milage money. So this, this milage is not recurring. So this will just be happening for the next eight years, I, I believe. And we've used two years already. And when we hire, if we're going to hire a mental health response team or a health worker, once the funding is done, then we, we, we are not assured of any other funding that's gonna support this. So. Just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Hey Reagan, I have a question for you. So when we, we still haven't set up like the, we still haven't gotten far with the account that would, when we take a thousand dollars from each marijuana permit. And we had guidelines on what that was for. But when we eventually do that, would mental health response kind of fall into some of those guidelines that we set? Because we identified like negatively impacted community by the, like war on drugs. So I feel like some mental health response, I don't know, like maybe we could make that work and use that as a funding source. Cause that would be something like every year we get new permits renewed.
You're speaking to when the eight years are over?
Just in general, it could be additional funds to go into that.
Okay.
I mean, lots of things fall in, would fall into that, mental health response. So I, I guess if we could make that work, I feel like that's another funding source. But we haven't really done anything with that yet. It's in the legislation in the chapter. But since we passed that in 2019, we haven't done anything with the, the, the money. Once we receive it.
Yeah, so we, we can always appropriate whatever. If we have a source revenue, then we could appropriate to a program that we have. So, but then usually what, when it comes to funding, we want to fund recurring expenses with recurring revenues. And for, so as long as we will remember that, like after the eighth year, if we don't get the funding, we know what to, how to address that.
The gap, okay.
So you're saying we do have eight years that we could use some?
Oh, cause we did initially, what we're using the mental health money is for, I believe for parks and then a little bit for, for the police, for their training. So that's where we, we were allocating this money. But then once now, we, we plan to use this for a response team or a
Social worker.
Social worker.
One or the other.
This will be, this will be hired or this will be employees. And if they're a new employee, we expect them to provide consistent service. So once the funding is done, we now have to find where, how are we going to support this program?
I get, we, we, after, it's sort of like when we get the safer grants. After the grant is over, we have to take on that employee. Right.
I wanted to.
We don't have to use the whole thing for that employee, you know? Like I said, we already budgeted for part-time. We could use some funds for that to make it full-time. Oh, Councilmember Morgan, we'll get back. But Reagan, how much are we getting now in milage money?
For the last two or three years, I think we were getting 390,000.
Okay. Just under 400,000. Okay.
Yes, Mayor.
So Reagan, just confirm if that would be possible to use, to get half from that fund. That we already budgeted for half last year that we did not use that could carry over.
I would have to check the numbers. I don't have the details, but we could, yeah, we could.
It's annual, yeah, it's annual, right? Right. Okay, thank you.
Because we've been allocating this to the parks capital. So those are not recurring expenditures. So we were, we were fine with those. But with this response team and employee, this will be, looks, looks like it will be a recurring cost.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Morgan, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I, I wanted to make a note of something. This is a point of reference or just for clarity. It's a few things on, on, on the list. The first one is implement community policing philosophy to enhance safety of all residents, businesses and visitors. But then we dropped down to five, and it says address the security problems for downtown business owners. And then we dropped down to nine where it says increase city council involvement. And then we go down to 10 where it says work with police, citizens and other groups. So my question is, is the, the community policing philosophy, is it distinct and unique to every different? Meaning like the people who are experiencing gun violence versus downtown business owners versus other citizens? Does that, is that like a, an umbrella that will address individuals? Or are all these distinct and need their own attention?
Councilmember Morgan, the, in some ways, you could say that all these are under, number one, that the community policing philosophy would be somewhat of an umbrella. But the, each one of those needs some attention on its own right now. We have, we've got to do something in number 10. We have got to do something. We all read the report just the other day. Two homes were shot up in New Park Ridge. That's happening almost every other week. You know, and then we got reports that there were shootings elsewhere. And then I'm getting calls from people that where there was no police, police were not called, but people are shooting in the neighborhoods. So, you know, that is something that we really need to address quick, fast, in a hurry. The community policing philosophy is going, is a, is a, is gonna take time to fully get it implemented and where it's really effective, where it will have an effect on all of these other things.
How about some clarity for the increased city council involvement and security for the entire community? What was like surrounding that?
That was my goal. What I originally was discussing was that Ward One council members have been fully engaged with the Housing Commission and other bodies and residents who had concerns over the security issues on, in Ward One and the shootings and all those things in Ward One. And so what I brought to the table in our previous meeting was that we are seeing incidents happening across the city, although we have been working about, on what's going on in Ward One. And so bringing that to the table for us to discuss as a body, how do we come together to figure out a plan to strategize for overall public safety in our community? Because we see that these things are spreading beyond the locus that we initially saw.
Thank you for the clarification, Mayor.
No problem.
May I return us to the mental health question? Because I think it was items two, three and four, I heard some discussion about whether they are separate items or whether they might be more readily grouped together. And what, what do you think would work?
I think there's three separate things that they're linked, but I think that there's three separate.
Agreed. I believe that there are separate things that ultimately work together.
Right.
Are separate issues in the moment currently.
Right.
And I do think, Mayor Protem, I think it might have been your question originally that I think somebody for whom each of these three are separately high priorities would probably choose each of these three. Someone for whom two of these might be higher priorities might choose two of those three in voting here.
I think that was started with our city manager and I agreed with her and kind of.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry about that.
Oh, it's okay. And I explained, I agreed with her though, and I just explained the other piece that we just highlighted that they work together, they're cohesive, but they're not necessarily mutually, you know, like they're just, they're not all one.
Right.
Work, that works for me, if it works for council and staff.
Um, before we voted on these, I just wanted to make one quick plug. Um, I know that like it was on, like it wasn't normal to include barrier busters in this part of the goal setting. But the reason why I moved it there la, last time was because I wanted to also use some of the mental health funding for that. And the argument there was that it would preventing, utilizing that to stop folks from being evicted and having other things like utilities shut off and assisting with direct cash payments would also assist with community safety. I just wanted to reiterate that before we prioritize these, because it's far down on the list. But it's still, in my opinion, a public safety issue.
Thank you. Anything else on this list before we move to voting on it?
I have a question about the number six. In terms of, I, you know, we go through the same as, that's inevitable. But I'd, I'd like to hear from whoever put it on. More specifics about that? Or the thought behind it, let's say that.
Which one was that, Steve?
Number six. If somebody could address the thought behind that one?
Oh, that was me. I, I didn't necessarily have a specific, specific plan about that. I guess to me, it's just to have it on the forefront of our mind. You know, for this next year, because they're still gonna be dealing with stuff. You know, I just want us to be positioned in a way where we're able to respond, you know, like we did, you know, when the, it first started and, you know, we were able to kind of rally some partnerships and, and help support folks in the city. You know, it's just, I guess it was just more keeping that on the forefront of something to stay committed to. Because, you know, and I don't know what that means or it might look like, but just that we're kind of at the ready. So.
Okay, thanks.
I will just say that I really hope if it is a priority for this council, that it only needs to be a priority for one more year. That a year from now, we're looking back and saying, remember when?
I say amen to that.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I just, God, I really hope this is a short-term priority for all of you and doesn't have to become a long-term priority. Yeah. Yes, please, Councilmembers.
Oh, no, I was just, I was just gonna say that, right? And, and I just think it's kind of an important statement to say, you know, that we're consciously making, you know, a commitment that to respond in whatever ways we can, even though I don't necessarily.
that to respond in whatever ways we can, even though I don't necessarily know what that looks like right now. But I don't know, so. So it's very vague, I understand, but.
May, may we vote at this point?
Sounds good.
I'm ready to vote.
I'm open to voting.
All right, since there are eleven items here, I believe Andrew will once again have to put this into two separate lists. And since there are eleven, let me ask if you would vote on six items under this list.
Okay.
And thank you, Andrew.
No warning until the very final.
Ah, man, I had seven, now I gotta get rid of one.
You pay me to be mean to you.
Except you said six.
What I do. Six, please.
With maybe.
Oh, if I, if I, if I gave you eight, you, if I gave you seven, you'd tell me you wanted eight.
Hey, we already did that.
Andrew, can you see what we're all voting for? I'm just curious.
Yes.
Oh, interesting.
Oh, I only get six this time.
Only six. I'm being mean to you.
What do I take off?
I mean, I think mine will make sense. I have to do, not select one of these three to get my six, but they all make sense together, so.
And when this gets presented, the ones that didn't get on anybody's list will still be there, right?
They will be there, yes. Um, I will, I will capture all of the items that you have and I will report on the number of votes from council and the number of votes from staff.
Three.
But I will share, I will capture all of the, um, things that you put on the list. I could be wrong, but I suspect even the low priority items are somewhat priority. Andrew, as far as you can tell, is that all the votes or are there?
Um, I believe there are still a couple more voting.
Okay.
Well, while people are voting, everybody say hi to Matt.
Has council completed all their voting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna end the poll. I can share the results. Maybe for a few moments. Ready for me to stop sharing and then we can go on the next section?
Hold on just a second.
Sure.
So what are the gold and blue?
The gold received the most votes in that section.
Ah, got it, all right, that's what I thought until I get done with it and I was like, man, okay.
And do keep in mind that, um, items, that sections one and two are listed separately, but this whole thing is really one big item.
Right.
Interesting.
Okay, I'm done, thank you.
Council, are we ready to move on?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. Um, so let's move to, um, item three, infrastructure, um, commons. And there are ten things listed here, um, up on my screen. And I will invite requests for clarification, word smithing, whatever works for all of you.
I have a question about the, uh, re-establishment of the Parks and Rec Department. And that is, would re-establishing that in any way affect funding that would be available for improvements to the parks?
No, it wouldn't, um, affect funding. Um, what do you mean, like to ma- towards maintenance and infrastructure?
In terms of budget, I mean, if, do we have to hire someone?
Of course, we would have to, we would have to budget for, um, a director. I think that will probably be, be it to start with. And then we'll have to start funneling, because, um, some of the duties of Parks and Rec are all over the place already. So some is being done in community development, some is being done, um, by economic development. Some has been, what did you say?
Oh, I said some is Department of Public Services, I think.
I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna say DPS. So basically, it would start out by just having, um, the right duties placed in the right place. And then if those duties have people already attached to them, then maybe they may be come under that umbrella. But we'd have to do an assessment just to see what else we needed. But, um, first it would be a director, basically.
Well, then, also Francis, um, we had initially, when we talked about this, utilizing, um, the freight house as, you know, more of a community space and, but also for events. Um, but using that funding stream to help with Parks and Rec, do you think that's still?
Yep, that is, it will come under there, because events will come under there.
Yep.
It used to be, so the, especially events person would not move, of course, because that was being utilized by some, um, somebody was doing that, excuse me, that's in the police department. So they may still continue though, because they are getting paid for. And it's just, they can just work with the Parks and, um, Director. So, yeah, unfortunately, we don't have any funds right now, too much because of COVID. But we will use, um, funds from the events.
Someday.
Game, that's our game plan someday.
Yep.
So the budget for the director, it would be separate from funding for improvements to the parks? I just don't, like, I don't fully understand how one wouldn't impact the other?
So I would have to go and look at the history of what the department looked like before it was dis- before it was dismantled. I believe that it was a, a department head and they oversaw all the parks. I think they worked in, um, in, um, in, I guess in concert with the DPS, uh, to make sure that the, for maintenance of, of parks. And I think DPS, you know, just maintained the parks. I'm not sure of anything else that, that their connection had to do with that department.
So there may be two separate funding sources, one to pay the and one for the actual park infrastructure itself.
Right, and they would know how to build those. Because that's what happens now, um, DPS builds out other things to other departments, you know, that they do. So this would just follow that.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Other items here that need clarification, conversation?
Um, under six, we'll create community warming space. I've been kind of tracking, um, work with, um, some folks from the DDA. And it looks like we may have a funding partner, so maybe we could be more specific with this one and, and actually budget funds for a community warming space.
Um, yeah, Brian, that was number six. I, I thought I threw that on there, but, um, if we can get more specific and more, um, and more individualizing about the needs of our money and stuff, how we can make it actually a reality, beyond a necessity, I'm open to it.
Yeah, I think, I, I think what's changed since last week, um, as far as I can tell, probably, possibly, is that there might be a funding partner for us, so.
It's amazing.
Yeah, I agree, I agree that we can set aside something, um, to, in, in the budgeting process. I, I say we can, but I really don't have the authority to say that. But I would like council to set aside, um, some funding. We can kind of put together what it looks like and present that, because Christopher is working on that. What it would look like as, as far as employees and, you know, maybe keeping the building warm. Because, um, hopefully we can utilize one of our buildings next time. Um, and if that doesn't work, you know, we can continue to use the Riverside Arts Center. But, um, yeah, we can put together something, Christopher. Um, of what it would cost to fund something like that. So council will have a better idea at budget time.
I have it plugged into my goals, uh, for twenty twenty-one, thirty thousand dollars, but that was just a, uh, kind of a placeholder.
Mm-hmm, was that, was that, um, a conservative placeholder?
That was, uh, what I thought with the different funding sources that we were looking at. We could reasonably come together, um, bring to the table, uh, to reopen the warming center. And so I, I was kind of working on that behind the scenes with a few different, uh, agencies to kind of take a feel um, and how they would maybe want to support that. And that was, uh, the goal I came up with that I thought was feasible, was thirty thousand, uh, to support the warming center.
Okay, all right, well, that's good, good legwork, Christopher.
Thank you, Christopher.
We're not blind. Thank you, Councilmember Jones Chance, I just learned some too.
I want to ask a question about number ten. Oh, go ahead, go, Brian.
Well, I was. I was just gonna say, so is allocate funding for community warming space, good language on that previous one, number six?
Yes, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, let me, uh, Councilmember Morgan, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, um, improve accessibility to city government buildings. Is that more of a handicap accessible or is it more hours of operation or both?
Who wrote that? We forgot.
There was a goal about having the, the the office at the police station open on Fridays? Was that where this came from or?
I, I, I didn't know if it was, like I say, handicap accessible, was it like hours of operation, was it even expanded beyond? So I, I don't, I don't have clarity, I was just trying to get clarity.
I don't know, I don't know who this was.
Who's, uh, who did that come from?
I think that's on from last year.
I was, I was gonna say, it may well be the case that, um, goals from last year that you did not tell me to cross off were forwarded to this one, so this could have been something that appeared in last year's goals and just carried over to this year.
Okay.
I also thought, did that not have anything to do with the improvements and the moving around of, um, departments inside City Hall as well, or am I making that up? I could be making that up.
That was in another, um, area.
I think, nevermind, that was an organization.
Yeah.
I remember, yeah.
I think I did mention something about improving accessibility both to physical infrastructure and, um, on our website. And if this is a branch of the same tree there, I, I did mean, uh, physical accessibility, like handicap accessibility.
Well, it's infrastructure, right?
So would it, would it be useful if we changed it, say, improve, um, physical accessibility of city government buildings? Or two city government buildings?
I think it clarifies it more.
Okay. Are there other items on this list that we should talk about before we move to voting?
I'd like to ask, um, Councilmember Jones Chance, if you had, could you just share one, um, example of something that you've seen?
Well, I am not, uh, physically handicapped, but what I will say is, you know, when you come into the lobby and if you have to go upstairs, uh, you know, the swing out of that door, it's actually really heavy and the door is kind of facing the, is it facing the wrong way? No, it's facing the right way. But it's, uh, it's very heavy, so one of those supports, um, support arms that go at the top, that kind of assist as you open the door. Um, even, I think even something as simple as replacing that with something better, um, would go a long way for someone in a wheelchair or on crutches.
Okay, because it's good to know, like, what people are experiencing, um, so you'll know what to look at. Okay, so that is just heavy, we need some support there too. And we'll look at other things too, but thank you so much for sharing that.
And, uh, we've had some folks do an audit for us at, uh, seven three four front EMU, uh, students.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, you know, they'll go through and like, they'll give you like a whole workup. It's actually very, it's very interesting.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else here?
Um.
So, um, yes, Councilmember Somerville.
Just one more time, wanna, um, plug that number eight. We've gotten a lot of complaints from residents about the inequity in our parking permits. And renters downtown are paying like over, like, three, like so much more than everywhere else in the city for parking permits. I, I, I just wanted to make sure to mention that one more time. I know we've talked about it a few times in the last year, but if you look at the number, the price for the parking permits, if you live in that zone compared to anywhere else, it's outrageous and not equitable.
Um, can I ask, uh, Councilwoman Somerville, is, is it, is it more than double?
It's like three hundred dollars compared to twenty dollars a year, so. I think we can, we can decrease it by, you know, even fifty percent would be great.
I have one, one thing to add. Number two, says repair the city's sidewalks to code. Is this in addition to what we already do under our, um, consent agreement? To provide accessible sidewalks, you know, because we are in an agreement to do so many sidewalks per year? Is this in addition to that?
Um, so I know that I had included in my goals for this year, surveying sidewalks, because I've gotten some complaints about several areas just in Ward Three. Um, I don't know how we got to this verbiage.
Uh, that was my verbiage.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is, uh, in addition to what we do.
Okay.
Because we do have a big sidewalk problem throughout the city. Uh, we are doing a survey of all of our sidewalks, um, and then working forward a plan to move forward. But it is one of the goals of the Community and Economic Development Department.
Okay, thank you. So it is to survey all sidewalks, not the, not, okay. So can we change that to say, um, allocate funds to repair city sidewalks?
Sounds good to me.
This helps, risk management sidewalks can be a, a big liability for the city.
Right, uh-huh, absolutely.
I have a, just a quick question, um, too, while we're on the subject of this. When we're, like, when we're redoing, like, right now with the border-to-border trail upgrades and the grant funding that we got for Frog Island Park. Um, one of the sidewalk, one of the areas is like on your way to that trail. Um, so I guess can we make sure that we're prioritizing the sidewalks that need to be repaired as we're doing other improvements?
I think, I think that's what he's saying, he wants us to survey.
Okay.
So I think the surveying will dictate the priori- priority for them.
Okay.
Am I right, Joe? But I think that that's what would happen. Thank you.
That makes sense.
So I changed number two to allocate funds to repair city sidewalks.
Yes, so that we. Yes, so that we know that this is different from what we already do.
Uh, clarification is always good. Can we move to vote on these items?
What do we get this time?
Um, I give you six because I like you.
Everybody else gets, everybody else only gets five? What?
That's right. Um, you can have six on this one. And since there are ten, they should all appear as one group this time. So I will, Andrew may be doing some last minute revisions on the list, but once that is ready, we can pop that up.
Council, when you are completed with your goals and department has as well, just raise your hand so I can be sure that everyone's everyone has has voted.
We get this time?
Six, please.
Six, okay.
Councilmember Morgan? Oh, oh, I see. I've never run. Sorry, sorry. Sorry.
I don't have the survey yet. Oh, oh, the poll, okay. I see it. Thank you.
Watching election returns coming.
Andrew, you want us to raise our hand or I can't, we don't have the raise hand feature on our end.
Right.
Yeah, it's at the bottom.
Yeah, it should be at the bottom there. There should be a raise hand icon under the attendees list. You should be able to raise your hand.
Interesting. Oh, okay. I was looking in the wrong place.
So what's the cat doing now?
Max?
Yeah.
Well, he Winnie is up in her tower. Sammy is in her bedroom.
Has everyone completed voting?
Yes.
All right, if everyone's done, I'm gonna end polling now. Now, share the results. All right, if everyone's ready, I can stop sharing results and go on the next section.
Oh, hold on just a second, please. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um. It is about seven forty now. Can I propose a five minute break? And then we come back and plow through the last bit of our list?
Absolutely.
We love break time.
Our serving a lot, and I hope this is valuable for all of you. So let's take about five minutes and then we come back and move through some stuff.
All right. Did you say we have seven left?
I'm sorry?
You said we have seven sections left?
Seven sections left, yeah. Don't forget, we started this discussion a little bit after six thirty because there was council business and some meetings.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Not taking quite as long as you might fear.
That's right.
So.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna go get a quick drink of water and I'll be up here in a couple of minutes to start this again.
Yeah.
They can be in my strawberry letter.
But congratulations. All right, you've you've fooled around and played around long enough. Time to get that, time to get back to work here. I'm taking charge now. So, alrighty, um, I am on our fourth of our goals here. And this is housing infrastructure. Um, and if you remember from last week, housing as its own category of goals was something that we put together. And we have nine items here. So as we've done before, let me invite conversation clarification before we move on to rank order and pri- to prioritize these items. Anything that people would like to talk about on this list? Um, make sure, are all people back here? Um, Mayor Richardson, are you back at this point?
Yes, I am.
Here. Okay, I'm not seeing all, I'm not seeing all the pictures. Um, Councilmember Simmons, are you back? I just want to make sure that the relevant, that people are here before we.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. I just, I don't, I, my my computer's not necessarily showing me your images, so I just want to make sure everybody is present. Um, any items for discussion here on this list?
I feel like last week, there should have been, one second, let me pull up my the goals that I submitted. I just turned my iPad off.
You're at the end.
Right, I don't have my like agenda on because I turned my iPad off.
Ah, I got you.
So I have to restart it. It'll just take a second. And I think number three, um, it should probably say work with MML to address affordable housing issues. They are supposed to release guidance sometime early this year, but it's not clear exactly when that is.
So is that work with MML to, can you give me that again? I'm sorry, I missed.
Work with MML, so the Michigan Municipal League to develop additional affordable to address affordable housing, just issues. Um, they're gonna release the guidance that covers a whole everything that falls under affordable housing.
Ending that one to, to address affordable housing issues. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I'm almost back.
Can someone help me understand number one?
I think this is about the issues going on at New Park. Yeah.
Okay.
And wherever else they, you know, pop up.
Yeah, okay, I figured it out. There should have been an item added last week for allocating a hundred thousand dollars for the housing trust, unless we ended up putting it somewhere else. But I thought we agreed to put it here when we made this a separate section for infrastructure.
That's not number seven, Councilmember Somerville?
Wow, it was right in front of me. Yeah. Thank you, the, should we add the, like, the actual dollar amount?
I think maybe waiting to budget to add a dollar amount. That's what I would think. I think.
That's fine. Um, I just, it got lost. It's hard to read on the screen.
My password is, I'm sure, S.
Maybe it could be reworded to say fund housing trust.
Anthony, sorry, you're not on mute. Maybe you want to be. Sorry.
Sorry.
I know your password now.
We all do.
Um, Annie?
Yes.
I didn't hear you, Anthony. I was saying, can we change number seven to say, um, fund housing trust?
Yeah, I think that would be better because as far as I can tell, last year during, when we like revisited the budget, we didn't put additional funding into the housing trust. So yeah, I think we need to at least include some, like, we need to say something about funding.
Right.
Here.
So, straight to the point, fund housing trust?
Yes.
Okay.
And then that way it'll get brought back up when we have our budget.
I don't, in my entire career as an academic, I'm not sure I've ever written a sentence that's only three words long, but I like it. It's a nice it's a nice change of pace.
And directive, too, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's blunt, can't misinterpret it. No semicolons in the sentence, so that's a, it's a nice touch.
That, I like that.
Items, uh, eight and nine. I I proposed item nine. Is there a way we could combine those? It's trying to pick up the votes here, but.
I know. How many items do we get for this one, Dr. B? Five?
I give you five. Um, but I, I I agree there might be ways to, uh, to fit eight and nine together if folks want to be creative.
Right, I I I agree putting them together.
Um, how about address issues of housing insecurity? I mean, well, let me actually ask you this. Um, what does nine give you that eight does not?
I think.
I think to me, nine is just making sure that folks who are currently homeless don't get lost in the shuffle.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, Brian.
I mean, I think when we're talking about addressing issues, I think that's forming solutions around them. And when I think about removing barriers, that's kind of stopping a red tape or some of the extra things that could happen a- as obstacles. I think those are kind of that they could be one, two, on the other side of the same coin. By addressing them, you can address issues of housing insecurity by removing barriers. So I don't know.
That sounds good, yes.
Maybe how about address issues of housing insecurity and homelessness? That way, at least it's explicit.
Yeah, I think combining them is good.
I'm okay with that.
Address issues of housing insecurity and homelessness.
Yeah.
That's what I, that's what I'm hearing. Um, are people happy with that?
I sometimes get lost in the in the terminology, because if someone was making ninety thousand dollars a year and I was making thirty thousand dollars a year, affordable housing would be completely different.
What was the term from our consultants for that group?
I forgot. I really liked it, too.
Do we want to go with housing insecurity and homelessness, address issues of housing insecurity and homelessness? Or are you looking for better language to use?
That works for me. Yeah, I mean, so long as we're all, so long as we're all clear that addressing issues of homelessness doesn't mean getting rid of homeless people.
Could we say?
I'd never even thought about that, Brian.
Neither. I understood. What did you say, Brian? I didn't hear you.
I said, as long as it doesn't mean getting rid of the homeless people. It's just about making them not homeless.
Right. Could we say address issues of housing insecurity and removing barriers for homeless citizens? Let's put an and in there.
Can I ask, does eight and nine, does that imply policy as in number five? Does addressing the issues and removing barriers imply us doing that by way of policy as which number five is kind of leading to, or is it just through commission and through, you know, incentive or hope?
I mean, I guess one does seem more indirect. Well, I guess, you know, five is sort of about current housing and now we're dealing about people who are houseless.
Okay.
I took it to mean establishing and implementing the policy. I mean, how else would you address it? You could establish the policy and nothing gets done. That doesn't really help anybody. I mean, the other thing is that some people's means of addressing homelessness are, you know, arresting all the homeless people or
Could we create, like, could we establish policy for making current housing more affordable and address issues of housing insecurity?
You want to combine five and eight?
I mean, if if if, I think policy is gonna be needed for five, eight and nine, if we're being honest. So if we establish policy for making current housing more affordable.
How about this? Okay, go please, sorry, please.
Go ahead. I I was thinking establishing policy for making current housing more affordable and addressing issues of housing insecurity while removing barriers, you know, like.
How, what about this? What if we combine five and eight? Right, establish policy for making current housing more affordable to address issues of housing insecurity.
Like it.
And then left nine as it was, remove barriers, which is implying that you're gonna do some sort of policy work in order to remove the barriers. So then you change nine to be remove barriers to housing, or you leave nine as it is and just kind of combine five and eight.
Works for me. Okay, then I have a question. What does number three mean?
So number three I brought up at the first goal setting session in part of my council goals, just to say that we're gonna prioritize working with the Michigan Municipal League once they release their affordable housing plans. They were supposed to release them at some point beginning twenty twenty one.
Okay, so that's just something that we need to do, that I need.
Yeah, I mean, I figured it's kind of like a given because we work, you know.
Okay, I'm trying to help those that are voting. It's kind of a given.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I know that, like, we already worked really closely with the MML, but.
But you can leave it there. But okay, I get it. Because they don't have any funding.
So, well. So we'll combine five with eight and leave nine as it was.
Yes.
That's, I'm hearing, I'm hearing reasonable support on that?
Yes.
Um, anything else before we move to voting on this one?
Well, I guess, I mean, technically, we could probably just strike out three because I think that we're gonna work with them to cover everything listed on this. If that makes sense. So that would take us down to seven.
Bill three?
Yeah. That's gonna happen no matter what.
Okay.
And eight went away.
So we're down six?
I think we have eliminated number three and number, we have eliminated number three and we've moved eight into five.
We're down to seven.
We're down to seven.
Okay.
All right.
And we get to choose five?
I'll give you four. If if there's seven, I gotta give you four.
Okay.
I can't be that nice to you.
Wow.
I'm so, I'm sorry.
Don't I have any extra credit banked up from like college?
I'll check my files. All right, Andrew, when you have the list ready, and I know you're, oh, there we go. I know, poor Andrew's making the changes on the fly here to get this voting going. So, um, we are set up to vote, team.
You said four?
Four, four, please.
Thanks. This is not easy.
Yeah, I'm I'm lost here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm lost here. Yeah, this is, uh.
Come on, check them off.
All right, got it. Oh, we're supposed to raise our hand here.
I think, is that all the people voting? I think that's sort of the number we've been capping out at. That cover everybody?
Um, yeah, yes.
Okay, awesome. Um, Andrew, would you share? Are we good with this list?
Yes, I am.
Awesome. Okay. Um, let's move on here to talk about, um, infrastructure concerning safety. And as you see on the list, there are nine items there. So as always, let me invite questions, clarifications, discussion.
By fixed River Street, is someone's meaning complete the development or work on the development or what? Who, I don't know, put that there. What did you mean by fix?
That's Anthony's.
Councilmember Morgan, are you there?
I am.
Do you have a question on, um, item number nine, Fix River Street, and what fix meant in this context?
Um, well, I know we're doing, uh, row fixture products, I mean, projects as, um, we get the, um, the capacity to do it with, you know, with, with grants and things. So it's, I, I, actually, at that time, I lived on River Street, so I was very impartial to that street um, from Michigan Avenue to Cross Street. And so, um,
Okay.
I know we have, uh, projects and we have schedules, and I know so at some point it's going to get on that schedule, so it's not of the highest priority.
Do we want to leave it on?
I, I think in the future, it's going to come back up, uh, anyway. Um, so it's, it's not necessary to leave it on.
Is Ron here? Can he let us know if it's on any of the, the list for repair?
I'm not specifically sure where the project at, where River Street is in our repair list or our long-term plan with Watts, but it's, it's not within the next ten years. I can, I can tell you that.
Okay, thank you.
Ten years, leave it on.
So off? Take it off the list?
Oh, it's going to be ten years. I'm, I'm going to leave it up to the voters.
Okay.
I thought one was completed. Maybe the chief knows. Maybe not. I don't know.
Do believe that that came up last week, and if, if I remember correctly, and please, um, chief, um, if you're there or anybody else, I do believe the chief on this item specifically said that it should be left up there, that some things had been done, but this has not been.
Gotcha.
Yeah, um, and please, if anybody has, um, I think they're called alternative recommend, recollections or alternative facts these days. If anybody has anything, please jump in.
All right, I'm having a hard time with the shared screen, trying to get back on here. The question again, please?
Um, item number one on the, uh, infrastructure list, has it been done, or is that still something that's being worked on?
That's something that was, um, placed into next year's budget on the capital, uh, capital improvements plan budget for next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Can someone clarify number eight?
I didn't put that on the list, but.
I, I, I put that on there. Um, I, I did that because, um, with, um, the name of the trucking company that is being complained about often in Ward Three, um, I think it's R and L, and a lot of the the, the director, or the supervisor said that new truck drivers were not aware of certain signages around the city and aware of certain, um, direction to go when they come in through our city. So, and I was thinking about certain streets having, you know, just to repaint and, and re, um, just, just repaint and reorganize some of our, our signage and some of our, our streets, um, our, our street line, just, just to keep it, um, just to upgrade or, or just to refinish them. I, I thought that was a project in itself.
Okay, um, is, actually, oh, sorry.
Can we, um, revise that to say survey city signage? Um, and update as needed? Because when you say update, we're not going to update all the signage in the city. We're not going to.
I don't think all of it's necessary, just.
Yeah, so we need to survey the condition and, and to address as needed. This way, yeah, thank you.
Please, I'm sorry. The survey city signage and update as needed?
Yes.
Awesome.
A survey could help in legal issues also.
What was that?
That was cutting in and out.
He said the survey would help with legal issues.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I have, um, some quick clarifications, I think, um, is, is Bonnie, hang on, I can look, um.
She was here.
Oh, cool. So, all right, I thought, I think last year I added number five. But I think what we found out is that we couldn't lower the speed limit. But I think this maybe, are we still talking about traffic calming here? But I don't think we can actually lower the speed limit because I definitely wanted to, and I think we did look into that and it wasn't something that we could do. Um, if anyone could clarify, I think I may want to strike that one out.
So Annie, um, I think that, and I think doesn't really number three kind of address that, like, that's part of number three, but I think, right, that we're not able to reduce the speed on.
I think I tried last year. That was, when, when we looked into it, it wasn't possible. Um, so we can strike that one.
Number five?
Much, as much as I would love to reduce the speed limit, um, we can't. Um, and then I don't see it, but one of the intents behind the four-way stop at dangerous intersections um, was meant to highlight the slip lane on Huron and Cross to get rid of it. So I think I want to, is it possible to add something right now?
A new item?
A new item, yes.
Okay.
Eliminate the slip line, slip lane at Huron and Cross. It's, it's something that MDOT is totally supportive of, but it would require council to act to basically pass a resolution saying that we want to.
Annie, help me understand what you mean by slip lane.
Yeah, so when you're driving on Huron, um, the, the intersection at Huron and Cross, you just kind of, everyone speeds around that slip lane. We could actually turn that into a four-way stop and eliminate that slip lane. When we do the additional, we have a, we have a, and Bonnie could correct me if I'm wrong here, or Ron, we are set to, to implement the new traffic calming measures on Huron soon, and we could eliminate the slip lane while we, we do that project.
So that would, that would require, uh, construction?
Yes, and it would also require council to pass a resolution to signal to MDOT that we wish to do that.
Okay, is MDOT willing to give us some money to do the construction?
It's, it would, it would tie in. Well, that's not entirely true. Um, it would tie into that project that's set to happen. Um, so yes and no. I mean, we would still be responsible for some of it, but MDOT is supportive of, of that. I know that I've communicated with them and so has, uh, our state senator. So, but it, it would require us to indicate that we wish to do that, and the funding stuff, I don't know, um, but it, we would need to signal to them that we're interested.
I would have no problem with that as long as MDOT was, uh, willing to, you know, fund it or.
Yes.
Is the, um.
Put some funding in it.
I want to ask about the Snow Buddies Program for winter maintenance. Is that something for, uh, is that something that's feasible for a city of our size? Is something that's still, um, that's, that we're capable of doing?
I think that's just a connectivity issue, right?
Um, last, oh, sorry.
That was a twenty twenty goal. It, it should have been, uh, taken off. Um, the idea was that you would have a, a piece of machinery that could be used by the businesses in the downtown area to clear snow, so there wouldn't be individual obligations that could kind of share in that obligation with a single piece of equipment. Um.
It was also that for citizens too, because I.
I thought there was, yeah, I thought that was about seniors and.
And, yeah, so there's a program in Ann Arbor where a whole neighborhood had, like, fundraised, but I was, when I added that last year, I was thinking on, like, a municipal level with both citizens and businesses. But I think last week someone said that we should leave it on, if I remember correctly.
Yes, it was discussed that it should be, it should be left on during the first goal session.
And I thought it was worthwhile leaving on, like, why wouldn't we continue? I, I think I was the person who said that, because I don't know, seems like an important program.
Yeah.
It just seems a little ambiguous, like.
Yeah, I thought it was kind of a really big, uh, ambition at the moment, given COVID and, you know, but, um, it would be great for everyone, for residents and, and, you know, the city.
How exactly would it work?
Well, if, if we would have to finance the equipment and the infrastructure behind executing the program citywide, so it would cost a lot of money and require extra staff and I don't know. I mean, municipalities do this already. There are municipalities that actually do this, but.
Are, are there some comparable to our city size and our budget that, that?
Ann Arbor has, has a program, all right?
It's, it's a neighborhood-run program, so they had, there was interest at one point in turning it into like a municipal-run program in Ann Arbor, but it didn't go anywhere, but the, the neighborhood, it's still a neighborhood volunteer-led and, and fundraised program.
So wait, wait, wait. So it's not, it's not, it's a city program that they've handed over to volunteers, or it's a volunteer program?
No, it's a volunteer-based program, but they did make an attempt to turn it into a municipal program at one point.
Well, what about, oh, sorry, Anne, Anne, Anthony. Instead of saying implement, maybe it's, you know, I don't know. I mean, I think.
We could. Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Anne, yeah.
I was going to say, maybe we just, like, because it's somewhat, like, right now probably out of sight for us, but maybe we could try to have staff do some research on other communities that actually have similar programs where the equipment is used citywide.
I, I was just thinking, this is that one word change from implement to research could be suffice to research nobody's program?
Sure.
Okay.
What about, and make proposals?
I'm open to everything.
Research and, and make proposals for nobody's program?
Yeah. And then just to be sure, did we add an extra item to remove the slip lane at Huron and Cross?
Suggested it. I didn't hear any objection to it. That doesn't mean there wasn't any.
Added it to the vote.
Great, thank you.
So there's four and ten? So four is still there, right?
There's many dangerous intersections.
Right, right.
But that's, that is a slip lane specifically, so it's kind of a different animal.
But how does that differ than number three? I kind of. Do we need to really call that out?
I mean, for the slip lane in particular, council does need to, like, we need to prioritize that we're going to indicate to MDOT that we want to remove that slip lane.
Well, no, actually, sorry. No, I agree, that one's kind of a special situation, but I think the install four-way stops at dangerous intersections could fall under three, you know, it says increased traffic calming, but then also like cross, crosswalk safety in neighborhoods and main streets. Um, I mean, to me, four-way stops potentially add to kind of that safety, but I mean, I, if.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want it word number three a little differently or make it a little more generic, but I, to me, that kind of goes into that one. The slip lane, I, I agree, that's kind of a unique, um, situation, maybe worthwhile calling out, but.
Yeah, I mean, it also contributes to all of the speeding between Cross and Eastern Campus too, so.
Yeah.
Kind of eliminate some of that.
Would you say between Cross and Eastern Campus?
Sorry, that was wrong, between Huron and Eastern Campus.
Okay.
Sorry.
Looking at that going like.
I'm tired. No, just like, the whole stretch of Cross from Huron all the way down to the water tower is pretty unsafe. People go forty-five.
All right, so what, what do we want to do here on keep the flip lane? As a separate item, I'm hearing?
Yeah, separate item.
Okay. All right, Andrew, how many things do we have on the list at this point?
There are nine items on this list.
Okay. And I suggest we vote and choose five of them?
Uh, before we vote, are we changing, uh, number five to repursue law, uh, speed limit reduction from Huron to E and U campus?
I think she scratched that completely.
I thought we scratched that.
That was removed.
Like, we, we can't lower the speed limit just by, yeah.
That's state.
Unfortunately, I would like it to be fifteen miles per hour.
Okay, just clarification, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
Okay. Shall we proceed and vote on this one?
Let's go.
You insist.
Go move.
All right, Mr. Clerk, uh, it is, he's, the guy's good. Okay.
Wait, how many do we get?
Five, please.
All right, has everyone cast their votes?
I haven't. Okay, done.
There, you see the results in front of you. And again, just to reiterate, you will get all of these in my final report, so no need to memorize them now.
Okay.
All right. Let me move us along to, um, infrastruc, infrastructure sustainability. And we have ten items here on this list. So tell me what you're thinking.
I kind of like this one as is.
With all of them?
Yeah, we get two in health, right?
I like that idea.
Oak seem happy, but let me give it a little more time for any.
I want to talk about number nine, create resilience hubs throughout the city at least one in each ward for emergencies. Wha- wha- what is that?
That is uh creating sites throughout the city where in cases of emergencies or urgency that uh citizens can go to um get resources um in response to say power outages, floods, uh COVID clothes, things like that. Uh, Brian Foley is establishing one at uh Park Ridge. Um, and we had discussed this in the Sustainability Commission about about putting these around town. And there's a a group of students from from uh University of Michigan that had done presentations to that um about how those work. But basically creating, you know, when you see these disaster relief and you see people huddled in the in the gymnasium at this, at the the high school or wherever, having that be more than just at one place in the city. And more than just, you know, hurricanes and floods and things like that, but other triggers as well.
I understand. And just one more question. For number three and number five, if we create a fueling system that would allow our city to buy vehicles to use alternative fuel, would that in turn reduce greenhouse gas emissions from the DPS fleet? So when we talk about reducing um greenhouse gas emissions, are we talking about vehicles specifically? Or are we talking about other forms also?
I can. It's a, that's a Ron thing, but actually number five could encompass completely number three. So there are other ways to reduce greenhouse gases from from the fleet, but having an alternative fuel is one of them. But it's a significant project. Um, you know, every time we talk about the, you know, vehicle replacement for the um, you know, we we look at the the green vehicles and and part of not getting alternative fuel vehicles was that we didn't have a um a refueling station for like propane. And so, you know, it was cross cost prohibitive then to take, if we bought a propane vehicle, you'd have to drive it twenty five miles to get it filled up and come back and what was the point of that? And so Ron was uh had looked into this and and done some cost estimates on it. Is Ron here for you?
Yes, I am. Sorry about that, you did a really great job of explaining it, you covered everything, so thank you.
So they should, should they both stay in the list as separate items?
I think when we talked to. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I I I think they can be consolidated. I mean, our current plan right now is to look at a propane station at our DPS yard. Um, we are continuing to evaluate electric, but you know, for our large vehicles, there's not really an electric alternative on the market right now. Um, so but but in general, it does the same thing, so yes, they can be consolidated.
Can you offer me or the group some wording that I can use because I don't think I could wordsmith this one very well?
Um, to allocate funding to install a uh fueling system to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from the DPS fleet.
Love it, thanks, Ron.
Not a problem, thank you.
Andrew, do you have that?
Boy, that was quick and easy for you.
There you go. Andrew, do you have that?
The most part.
That's all we need, Andrew, the most part. My last, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, now I was just going to ask if Andrew needed any clarification on the wording there or if what we have is okay.
So now just read back. Allocate funding and alternate fueling system uh for the DPS fleet to reduce greenhouse gas emission. Today.
I think that sounds great.
Councilmember Morgan, you had one more.
Well, I I was just, again, I'm lost about condensation and um. I'm thinking number one and number seven, I'm thinking if we explore moving from recycling bins to recycling carts and apply for grants for carts, is that increasing recycling? Or are those two different completely things?
I think that's two different things, that was, part of that was mine and I think also kind of a combination of that Ron also had as a goal.
Okay.
I don't know what your opinion is, Ron.
I I think those two can stay separate while, you know, carts would technically increase recycling rates, but there's other ways that I know council has discussed to uh increase recycling for the drop off centers, different things. So I think really they're they're um two separate goals.
Else on this list before we proceed?
Um. You know, I put ten on here just to draw attention to it, but I don't know if anybody was interested in this and I can certainly take it off and put it into and just speak with staff about it and and commissioners about it.
I was going to ask about ten, what exactly are you talking about?
Um, there's a training program that has uh regular meetings in terms of um creating uh training people within a municipality um to move move resilience initiatives through the system. And and if you if you participate in this, then there's there's um there's the knowledge that you walk away with, but it also gets you, you know, in touch with people at the state level and, you know, funding opportunities and things like that, so I thought it was useful for that. It doesn't address things in a general sense, you know, it's a very specific thing, but I think it brings um education and resource to people um, you know, on staff and on commissions. Um, and, you know, I think I I I'm not sure what the cost associated with it is, I had looked it up, but it's it's kind of a minimal cost and I would certainly pay my own way to that, but um you know, I I brought it up because it would be a minimal budgetary item to to fund that. And I think it has, it has, you know, it's kind of like seed money in the budget, you know, you send people to this and it comes back and then, you know, that can then be disseminated to other folks.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just leave it there, I'll just leave it, people can vote.
Else people would like to talk about? I think when you've got a list put together, roll on this one.
Sounds good to me.
And we combined three and five, correct?
Three and five were combined, yes.
Is five as well?
I'm sorry?
Vote for five?
Uh.
Yeah, the old five. It's it's now three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, now I understand what you're talking about, please vote for five, yes.
Yeah, I'm at the total, yeah, thank you.
Five, please vote for five, sorry, my brain, lunch break there, sorry about that.
Ten is the new five, right?
Now even I get it.
Sorry about that, everyone.
How many categories do we have left?
We have four more, um, two are fairly short, two are more average length.
Has everybody completed voting?
Yep.
All righty, I'll end pulling and share the results.
Wow, look at that.
Wow.
That's our first hundred percent.
I was gonna say, that's our first one hundred.
I was gonna say, I believe that was our first hundred and uh.
Yeah.
I'm I'm really trying very hard not to editorialize here, but I do want to say that on behalf of my children who I'm, whom I hope have a planet to uh live in when they get old. Um, thank you for your attention to that. Okay. So it took us two and a half hours, but we have achieved consensus, so congratulations to everyone. Um, let's move along and talk about um infrastructure buildings. And we have six items here on this list.
I think um five could probably be eliminated because staff had already indicated that they can do that.
Okay. Objections to that or are people okay with eliminating five?
I'm not sure um about eliminating it.
Well, so I added it just as like there is, we can leave it, I think that staff had already indicated last week they could do this now. Um, so we can leave it, but it would make room. It would leave room for us to focus on some of the other things on this list if we remove it.
Fine, it was yours and you're willing to take it off. Go ahead.
Yep. Okay, cool. And then I'll just bother staff about it offline.
I just want to ask a question about three and four, when it says we increase in vacant dangerous and building enforcement and increasing rental inspections to catch up, like, is that according with the staff's schedule? Um, and and a- a- as it is, or they're making a new schedule to offset the um the the past ones that we didn't do?
Uh, this would be to catch up on our rental inspections that we haven't done due to COVID. And then also uh um ramp up our vacant and dangerous buildings enforcement. Uh, that's just a general thing that a goal that we have every year to try to make sure that uh we have no vacant and dangerous buildings uh in the city.
I'm just trying to get like, like, if you did like three rental inspections a month, like, do we have to do like ten now to catch up? Like, how backlogged are we?
Well, we haven't done any um rental inspection, well, we've done some rental inspections, but it's going to take a little while to get caught up. One goal that councils had for our department is to make sure that we are caught up, so doing them every two years. And we got there six months before COVID struck and we were doing really well keeping up on them. And then COVID hit and people don't feel comfortable going into apartments and apartment buildings. And when we didn't know how COVID spread, uh, it was really concerning for our staff. Um, but um we have to actually put together a plan, but we have to wait until we get to a point where we could put together a plan because there's still a lot of unknowns.
Okay, so it could include having additional staff persons on a temporary basis?
Well, what I'm, what I'm actually requesting in this year's budget is actually uh computer um hardware and software to help speed up the rental inspection process.
Okay, and but it would not need extra manpower?
Not at this point.
To catch up? Okay, just just equipment?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion items on this list?
I have a question about number six. Um, is this the counterpart to the previous one that we had about making it physically accessible or um? What, what was the thought behind number six?
I do not recall.
I didn't write that one, I think.
This was council member Jones's chances goal.
Oh, oh, okay. Is that related to the accessibility council member? Oh, Brian.
It was.
It was?
Yeah, and I think, I don't remember how it got split, but I guess it got split. So we can, we can fix it from this list since it's on the other one.
Okay. Which one was that? Six?
Six.
Okay. And also, um, number one, redevelop long term vacant sites in the city. Um, who who wrote that?
That's my goal.
Wasn't that on another list? Or something similar?
This is my my permanent list.
Yeah.
Because we need to have funding for us to be in a developer because we're not developers normally.
This goal doesn't require any added funding outside of what we currently get.
Does this include Water Street?
Yes.
That was the point, that's what I thought.
Okay. Can you put um in parentheses Water Street?
Well, this isn't just Water Street, this is.
Including Water Street.
Including, because we don't want to not have it on the list.
Yeah.
It actually stated somewhere.
We are qualified number one a little bit and just add uh equitably redevelop long term vacant sites in the city, just so that our focus is on that.
Sure.
Equitable, equitably develop, re, I'm sorry, equitably redevelop long term vacant sites in the city, including um Water Street?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And we get one vote here, right?
There are four here, I believe now, is that correct, Andrew?
Correct.
All right, uh, let me give you two on this one.
Two and five and six went away.
Five and six have gone away.
Okay.
Oh, look, it's already up there.
And we get two, correct?
Give you two, give you two votes on this one.
Has anybody tried to vote more than you should? You're allowed?
But don't don't give them ideas, don't give them ideas. I'm having a hard enough time keeping this group in line.
I am from Chicago, so that.
Will they catch it if I vote for three? So we get one on this one?
Two on this, we'll get two on this, uh, two for the one we're working on now, yeah. I'll I'll move the next one up in a few uh, we can talk about that one soon.
Has everyone completed voting?
No.
I think we're a little short on number here.
I don't have the, oh, you, oh, okay.
Yes, you should be good here.
No, I was looking at the office. No, I was looking at the office.
Yeah, no, we're not up to office yet. Okay, we're good here. All right, I'm I'm sorry, I scanned the screen up so I could see what we had. Okay. So we have three items under infrastructure office.
What? How many?
Three. There are three here.
Oh.
So three here in front of you for you to talk about and discuss.
Someone help me with one. So is there, how much manual processing do we do now?
I think we've been slowly trying to automate things.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And I think even if this was to make the list, departments, you know, may put it in their budget and explain, you know, what it is that they need to automate still. That's what I would encourage them to do if that didn't make the list, because this is something we try to improve on our customer service, on our retention all the time.
Other items to address here? Now we move this one to voting?
How many do we get?
I give you one on this one.
Oh, yeah, well, let's see.
Has everyone voted?
Yes.
All right, I will end the polling.
There's going to be recounts up the wazoo on this one, everyone. Going to be doing recounts and court challenges on this particular vote for a long time.
Can I say that we combine two and three? So that it says implement an environmentally friendly office by clean, I mean, including cleaning and organizing, then this will help.
Funny, because I thought I thought about combining one and two earlier.
Seems like, yeah.
Two and three.
I thought there was eighteen of us.
And then
That was six, five, six.
Huh?
I thought there was eighteen of us. That was six, five, six. If my math is correct. One did not vote, I think.
Since I am the host of the meeting, I'm not permitted to vote in these polls, so all these
Okay.
Gotcha.
Oh, that's so sad that you can't vote, Andrew.
I have access to all the reports.
That's voter suppression.
I agree with joining three and two and three.
Are folks thinking?
Can you do that after the fact?
We have to break the tie.
Maybe we can let Andrew be the swing vote.
Well, I mean, and and folks, the other thing is, I mean, you'll get the report with the vote totals and you don't you know, if you're looking at things and they're close, you guys can make use of the data as you wish. Right. You know, I don't think we necessarily need to work actively to break just for the purposes of breaking a tie here.
I mean, it's important, it's important to do all of them.
Right. And they will all show, and as is right now, they will all show up on the list as relatively equal, pretty much basically equal priorities for you guys going ahead. So. Okay. So we've got two more things to think about. Both under the heading of sort of council staff, one on workflow, one on development. So two more items under council staff workflow. I have nine items up here that came out of last week's meeting. And I open it up for your discussion.
Can someone address number four?
You just took my question.
Sorry.
That's okay, as long as we get an answer.
Um. I think that it's like it has to do with one of the last ones when it came to commit, I think, community is basically saying that it's been a few different times where we were applying for grants or or right on the cusp of the deadline and things of that nature. So I was thinking we get a solution for some of the protocols and well, I think it had wording for our financial structure, basically our protocols, our practices that when some of our things are meeting deadlines or when it comes to expiration dates and things of that nature, to have a protocol of who, whether it's staff, how to take care and offset some of those issues.
Okay.
I don't, again, it was reworded the way I thought it should be in the prior in the prior section, it kind of mean the same thing.
Want to keep it, keep it here though, or not?
Or you know what, if I'm being honest, I think I was trying to create more equity in the city through the city's protocols and their practices to find more equitable solutions in that. That means to have to find out in our hiring practices and our firing practices and our commissions if we're upholding equity and fairness in those across the board. So I like to leave it there.
Okay, absolutely. Other items people would like to discuss?
Number eight.
You had thoughts on eight?
Um, I put that on there and I just wanted to keep us to keep in mind that we should keep researching the possibility of rail. Yes. So I wanted to keep that there so that we can keep our eyes out for funding and that I can kind of, myself and Joe Myers can reach out to others in the region to see if they're interested. And so it's really just exploring to see who's interested in helping to fund this on a regional basis. And to continue to, excuse me, and to continue to look for grants. I wanted that to stay there because I don't want that to get lost.
Yeah.
Because we did not move forward at, you know, last time. That is off the table, but we want to continue to see what we can do to make this happen. And I was talking with someone from AATA and there is work being done on regional transit now. And I also talked to somebody else that called me and I can't recall who it was at the time. But that whole subject came up. So there is a buzz in the region about regional transit. So, yeah, it would be definitely to explore because if there's a buzz and it's somewhere near us, you know. Right. You know, I can also report back, you know, that most people are, you know, favored whatever location. But we'd be able to try to have some kind of report to council of what we discovered. And if it's a goal, and when it's a goal. Right.
By leaving it here, it is captured. Other items here that people would like to talk about? Move this list to a vote?
Yes.
Right, and for this one, I'll give you five votes.
Yay.
I should have asked this question. What is M D N R?
Michigan Department of Natural Resources.
Okay, thank you.
They got whittled down. There were a lot of grants listed in that originally and
Right.
I just wanted to let you guys know that Councilmember Brown, Mayor Porton Brown had to leave due to a family emergency.
Okay, thank you.
Did he leave just now?
Yep.
Andrew, Andrew, I will make a note when I do the report that the last two sections will have fewer council votes just because there were fewer council people voting.
Yep, just this, yeah, this one, just before this one was when she had
Okay. Thank you.
Woo hoo, one more.
Has everyone placed their votes? All right, I'm pulling.
Oh, really? Wow.
Move on to our last item?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we have thirteen items here under council staff development. Admitted for your discussion.
What's organizational diversity?
What number is that?
That's number one.
Ah, I mean, that's kind of I don't know who wrote that. But I could imagine.
Kim or the city manager would be my guess, potentially.
I don't know. I don't know this for sure, but it is possible. This was also something that came from a previous list that just was not questioned in the last meeting. I don't know that, but it is possible that that happened.
I think number one and number 10, they're not the same thing, but they could somehow like number one to promote organizational diversity and inclusion in staffing. I would imagine, I'm talking about from top to bottom, having a reflective diverse population and then number 10, creating a framework for more effective recruiting staff and in promotion. I believe if it's diversity and inclusional, if that's where those all work together. Is the training for leadership, no, 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 I'm sorry, is the the framework for effective recruiting tied in to promoting organizational diversity?
Recruiting staffing. I could see combining those.
Yeah, you could put that, I would say create framework for more effective recruiting staffing and promotion for city staff and then we could say by promoting organizational develop, I'm sorry, organizational diversity and inclusion in staffing and recruiting. Something like that, Mr. Bernstein.
I'm thinking and playing here.
I think create framework to promote organizational diversity and inclusion in staffing and recruiting. I think the framework will cover like the staffing.
I think it's, yeah, okay, I see what you're saying. And
Or you think a city manager?
Yeah, I would say that's fine. Create a framework for promoting organizational diversity and inclusion.
Yes.
And
About in recruitment, staffing and promotion for city staff?
Yeah. Could you say that again, please?
I can try. Create framework for promoting organizational diversity and inclusion in recruiting, staffing and promotion for city staff.
Sounds good.
Mm hmm. That sounds good.
I like that, too.
Hey, Kim.
Hey.
Hi, Kim. Just heard some news.
I call it AJ. No. I don't miss jumps, sir.
Any, so we are going to combine one and 10. Andrew, do you have the language for the combination of one and 10?
Yes, I have it.
Okay, awesome. Anything else on this list we want to play with?
Number three. I'm not sure who wrote it, but this is kind of where I come from in my day job. Improve customer experience by training for frontline staff. I'm not sure what was what was intended by the word management, but it's pretty much
Got to manage your customers and get them to do what you want them to do.
Right. Versus giving them a better experience both through
Ring out the whip. We don't have suckers like they're used to at the bank.
Customer is always right, except when we don't want to. So, um, improve customer experience by holding training for frontline staff?
Sure.
Yes.
I think that's a good choice.
I think so, too. Me, too. Oh, I'm sorry. I think number four has been completed. Is that right, chief?
That is in progress. It should be done by July.
Yeah, so I think we could take that off. Right? Because it's almost done.
Yeah, we could, we could take that off.
MACP is Miss Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police?
That is correct.
Okay.
And number six and seven. Can you combine those? You can say evaluate and implement employee rate raises, performance raises. Because that says evaluate staff pay kind of already goes with the one you just approved about the structure. The non union structure.
Right.
That's the same as evaluate pay. No, it's not. Because this is kind of, I'm thinking about this. This is this, I didn't write it, but it could be evaluating the pay for certain positions. Who wrote this?
You're talking about which number?
Seven.
Oh, I don't know.
Six and seven. Six and seven, I think, are being talked about.
Yeah, what's seven, meaning evaluate positions? What what they're like going through and evaluating each position? The pay for them?
Who wrote this, but I know we did talk about at last bull setting about the compensation study and things, but this might be different.
I think maybe a year ago, we were talking about the D P S, because I know that they were kind of short staffed. And I was wondering what the pay scale was for the lowest position to the highest position. And that was a specific. That was a specific asking about the D P S.
Okay, we can leave it if we if we wanted to evaluate the pay for different positions, we might have to get a third party. Because that's that's really extensive for the one and a half persons that we got. But we could do, we could do it if that's what the person, okay, never mind. You didn't ask me for all that. Thank you for talking that out with me. Because I couldn't remember what that is.
Other items here?
Is, are eleven and twelve different? Were.
Yes.
So so eleven was city staff and twelve was internship from.
Right.
Oh, right. Number eleven is only council. Number twelve is for, got it. With council and staff, alright.
What it does say council in both of them, it could be confusing.
Would you like to eliminate council from number twelve?
I think I think it seems pretty accurate. I mean, from what we discussed last time, I mean.
Right.
There's confusion on my.
No, I like twelve.
Okay. I have to put in my own E M U plug here and say I really like twelve, too. I, anything we can do to have for the university to be working with the city and connected with the city is a great thing from where I sit.
Same here.
Agreed.
And I think number thirteen, we had been having a joint meeting with the Ypsilanti School Board. I think maybe we can begin that again to keep that relationship going and then inquire, you know, of their needs of us and then we can also tell them what our needs are.
I just ask a quick question on thirteen. Should that read Ypsilanti Community School Board or does it still go by Ypsilanti School Board?
Ypsilanti Community. And you could leave it there just, it'll be on my radar anyway. And the clerks, just to you know, see when we could have a joint meeting because we 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 used to have one.
Right.
So I have us, we've made a few changes. We have combined one and ten and we have eliminated number four. We are at eleven items right now. Anything else we should talk about with these items that are left?
Yeah, what would pursue additional training for code officers entail?
Any training than they receive right now.
I'm sorry?
They don't receive any training right now? And so this was to give them training in order to help them identify plants and actually better better enforce our ordinances.
Okay, so we are just asking for training, but we don't know what training.
Well, this was put on last year for invasive species training because there was a lot of complaints. We amended the ordinance to help with some of that, but it's to give them training, yes.
So this is going to be hard to budget for because it's kind of just going to be a blanket. We don't really know what training they're getting, just.
Can we specify? Like, when you think about, we're not trying to get them to be horticulturists.
I'm not trying to like just specify, you know, blank, 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 but I just want to get a general idea of.
I mean, so I can put this in the budget and we normally have small training budgets for all departments. This is one that, one, my only department that does not. And so I don't think it needs to be a big, long discussion. It was just talking to council about the goals that I had of code enforcement when taking him over last year.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be a big discussion, but I'm.
I mean.
Because I want to understand it.
Yeah.
Um, so is it possible that you can put this in your your budget?
Yes. So it can be deleted off here.
Yeah.
Okay, that is number five.
Did six and seven get combined?
I thought they did. Yes.
They did not, as far as I know, but if.
Yes, you can. Implement employee performance raises and you make staff pay.
Bind them into one?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
You say six, seven and eight city manager or just seven and eight?
No, just six.
Don't want to tie their fate to council, come on.
We all go down together.
Yeah, wow.
Well, no, you say that, but that was one of the things that I would want to do with council pay is that's what they do with the county. The commissioners pay is tied to the lowest level, the lowest raise level of the other employees, whoever gets, whatever group gets the lowest raise. The commissioners get that same level. If a group gets two percent, then commissioners get that same two percent. And but there is this tied to non-union workers.
What I'm saying is in my, I could be just beating a dead horse, but I do think if we evaluate staff pay and evaluate council pay scale, that would determine whether they get performance raises?
No, they could do, they could be separate for staff.
Yeah, they're separate events, but it just gives me permission to do both.
Okay. Thank you.
You've been very good this year, Anthony. I think you should get a parry.
You're the only one.
All right, so. Under by my guess, I think we have nine items remaining.
Or ten items remaining.
Ten items, okay.
And we get seven, right?
I'm feeling, feeling, if we're up to voting. Why don't we vote on and choose five of the ten?
Oh, thank you.
I'm feeling happy.
Just an FYI, even though there are only ten items, this will still be in two, two question sets.
Okay.
Between the two, please vote on five.
Andrew, my.
There, there is only nine. I didn't delete the implement employee raises. Evaluate number one and number six. Here, me, let me redo this real quick. Give me a half.
Yeah, why don't, why don't, why don't we redo and start from the beginning here?
Yeah, because you have radio buttons for the second thing instead of checkboxes. So you can only select one in the second section.
Radio buttons? Is that technical jargon from H R speech? Five, that's this is.
So now, Andrew, there'll be nine at this point?
And Andrew, I just want to say thank you so much for doing this for us without being able to vote.
Yes, I second that.
Okay, it's not letting me, it's not letting me edit this, so. Let's see.
If two are combined, maybe we could just tell people do not vote for that one. Like for one of those two.
Well, how about we select a number, though, right? Like either this.
Right, I'll, yeah, I'll select one number and say, don't, nobody vote for that one. Okay, which?
So I re, I restarted, so vote again. Just don't vote for six. So if you want that one, just vote for one.
So Andrew, though, in the second thing, section, those are radio buttons. You can only select one. It won't let you vote for multiples in the second section. They need to be checkboxes.
See if I can edit it.
No, hold everyone, hold up voting if you would for, hold up voting for just a second while Andrew digs around on this one.
We get to vote for, we're voting for five or four.
There'll be nine available, so I'll have you vote for five.
Okay, thank you.
But I think we're just trying to fix one quick technical glitch here in the survey.
Right.
So it's not letting me create another list or another poll and it's, and I can't go into edit this. So how do you want to do these, these last four there, the seven, eight, nine and ten?
Well, can you, you can't create a new poll?
I can't create a new poll. It won't let me create a new poll right now.
Is it possible that we could just email you what we want and?
Why don't we break it down into, there's six on the first one, vote for four on that, and then we'll do just a raise your hand kind of thing for the last four.
I think, I think I'd, I think I prefer, Andrew, that people are not limited to how many they can vote for in the first round. So what if we said this, um, Andrew, could you put the poll up for just a second? Nobody vote, please, if you would. So what if we said, um, would this work for people? It's, um, try, so there are just three on the bottom, four on the bottom. Would everyone like to perhaps just send me a quick email with the numbers that you are voting for? It's like, send me an email and say your name and the five items you're voting for.
Okay.
Could that work?
What is your email?
I'll share my email right now. Will that work for people? Just shoot me a quick email and we'll be done with this.
Okay, so was you saying that we couldn't go from one to two?
Right, one and two, the problem for two is it only seems to be letting you vote for one of those. You can't vote for more.
Oh, because I, I just did and it let me.
Vote for more than of the item, of the items number, number two.
I have voted and, and then you guys took it away and I had voted for more than one down there.
You can vote.
Two.
Okay, yeah, I don't know. It's mine, it's radio button, so you can only select one.
I didn't see any. For that section, it says single choice, so you should be only able to, for the first six, it's multiple choice and the second one is single choice.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, you right. Oops, sorry, never mind.
All right, so let's do it this way. Let me give you all my email addresses right now in case you don't have it. It is J B E R N S T E I.
Wait a second.
Sure.
J.
J B E R N S T E I at e-mish.edu.
And we just put numbers?
And yet, so on this list that you see in front of you, don't vote for number six because number six has been eliminated combined with something else. So of numbers one through five and seven through ten, just you can shoot me an email and pick five numbers. One through five and seven to ten, pick your top five.
Okay, Andrew, can we see the second page, please? There is no second page.
You should be able to scroll down if you can't see it on your.
I don't see, I mean, no, I have, I just have the one of two, the first one of two. She wanted to see the whole list. I need, I need to see the four, the last four.
It's however big your box, your kind of like little dialogue boxes.
Can't get it, Jennifer.
Okay, it might be, did you already submit it or?
No, I didn't submit it.
I'm gonna.
My next box isn't.
I'm going to try something here to see if this works, so bear with me for just a second. I'm going to try to share my screen and see if that box will appear. Hold on. Yeah. Can you all see it here on my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just have to quickly scroll up and show you number one. But I'll just leave my, yeah, I'll leave all that there.
And choose how many, yeah?
Five.
Okay.
I've already sent.
But don't pick number six. Choose five, but don't pick number six.
I thought we're picking out number four, too.
No, no, four, I thought four was saying.
No, because we already started it.
Okay, then nobody pick four.
Right.
And I think, okay.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, four is, okay, got it.
Yeah. But there is a number, and six and seven were combined, so is that six?
Yeah, don't, so you see a list of ten things in front of you. Vote for five of them. Don't vote for four, don't vote for six.
Okay. Okay, but I. Okay, but I have 13 things in front of me.
Oh, no, no, look at, look at what's in front. Look at the thing that's in front where it says polls, um.
I don't think that's not up.
That's not.
That's not up, okay.
Yeah.
Um. All right.
Yeah, mine wasn't.
There it is, there it is.
Now it's, now it's up?
Yeah.
Wow, I have no idea how that happened, okay.
I already emailed you mine, so if we change around the numbers, it might be confusing.
Well, um.
Number four's just different than number four on the old list, so.
Okay, but I need page two.
You'll have to scroll down on your, your device, mayor. We can't, we can't give you access to that. You have to scroll down.
Scroll down where? On the side?
I can read them off for you.
I'm.
I think it's because you're on mobile that you don't see the whole.
It's not allowed.
I can, I can just read them off for you if you'd like.
Please.
Okay, number seven is evaluate council pay scale.
Okay.
Number eight is implement training for leadership for employees, internal, internal leadership program.
Okay.
Number nine is create framework in organizational diversity and inclusion in recruiting, staffing, and promotion for city staff.
That's number, that's number nine?
Nine, yep. And then number 10 is develop additional administration support for council.
Okay, that's number 10.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
I have eight emails so far from people. Um. Annie Somerville, Joe Myers, Kimberly Jones, Ron Akers, Steve Wilcoxen, Tony Dejuce, Anthony Morgan, and Frances McMullin have emailed me so far.
Okay, I'm working on it.
Okay.
Now, is your name all lower, or is it?
It's not case-specific.
Okay.
So I, I actually emailed you as well, Jennifer Simmons. I don't know if you see your, that one yet?
No, I don't have it. Um, J, can I check the email address that you have?
Um, J B E R N S T E I.
At Emish.
Yeah.
Okay, so there is an N in it?
There is no N, no N.
Okay.
No N at the end. Okay.
Does J B E R S T I at U E, EMU Mish?
No, J B E R N S T E I at Emish.
A E B E R N, okay. S T E I, right?
At Emish.
At E, okay.
Yep.
That is interesting that I'd never noticed before that the N wasn't in your email address. That would throw me off.
That's, they limit the size of them. So.
So. Oh, wait. You know what? Is it going to let me do this? Oh, it knocked your name out. Go on talking.
Okay. All right, so, um. I think at this point, um. I will capulate these votes. Andrew will send me the spreadsheet for the others, and I will pull things together and get the goal-setting report out to you. In the next couple of days, I'm gonna spend the bunch of tomorrow watching TV, but after that, I will get it out to all of you and share it. And let me just say that it really has been a pleasure to work with you on this. I hope I've been able to be helpful to all of you in doing this, and I just wish you all the best of luck going forward as you work to pull these goals together and hope for a successful year with none of the surprises that you all had to deal with in this past year. So, um, thank you, everyone. Um, I'll turn you back over to Andrew or Frances if there's any other business you need to deal with besides.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, so thank you, everyone. Um, unless other people who are higher on the pay scale than me have any other issues, um. You're, if you've done your stuff, you're dismissed by nature.
Thanks, Tucker B.
Don't look at council, man, not on the pay scale.
Good, good.
You're trying to get on one. I'm having trouble with email, so what is your number? I'll call you.
Sure, it's 734.
Okay.
975.
Okay.
4577.
All right, thank you. I'll call you. Okay.
Sounds good. Okay, um, is everybody else good here? All right, um. Thank you so much, everybody. It's really been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you to Tamea, too.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Tamea.
All right, everybody have a good night.
Everybody have a good night, rest of the week.
Chief, I just wanted to say.
Enjoy the inauguration tomorrow.
Weekend.
We need to.
I make a motion.
We need, yes, we need a late motion to adjourn, please.
I make a motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Yay.
Hi.